Rise and say your prayers. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are you recording? All right, Mrs. Cole, you can do a little call, that'd be great.
Aiden Warner, student member. Yes, sir. Mr. Hyde.
Present.
Mrs. Thompson, present. Mr. Lamb.
Here.
Mrs. Jocker Davis.
Present.
Mr. Stavell.
Present.
Mr. Grob.
Here.
Mr. Zellet.
At this time, we don't have any presentations tonight, except we have a welcome in here.
This is Jack Thomas, his name is John Thomas, but he's been referred to as Jack. He is gonna fill out for Mr. Schneider as our long-term substitute for eighth grade social studies. And I know he was approved at the June board agenda, but I wanted to invite him here to at least meet all of you and to say hi, kinda give an official welcome from all of you, so. Jack, welcome.
Go away. Thank you all so much.
Yeah.
Thanks for being here. Thank you guys for having me. I'm excited, looking forward to teaching eighth grade history. It's gonna be fun.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, I'm due item three minutes. Be it resolved at the minutes of the July fifth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting on the July fifth, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two reorganization meeting be approved.
Can I get a motion? So.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Visitors who cross, I don't think they have any today.
No.
Okay. And five, approval of warrants. Be it resolved that after an audit of bills, payment of the warrants and internal claims, audit reports be approved. Can I get a motion?
So.
Is it second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. By twenty-two treasures report be resolved and treasures report from March, April and May twenty twenty-two be approved. Can I get a motion? Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we've got some policy coming up here, John.
So we have three policies, even though four are listed for the board's review. The first one, thirty-four-ten is a much-needed update. We've provided you the current and then the recommended. The current policy contains a whole bunch of stuff way back when in regards to what the code of conduct needed to include, which ours does, but it's not required anymore. So if you take a look at the recommended, it's much shorter, it's much more concise. It basically just talks about we will develop a code of cond- conduct annually. We'll have a public hearing, which Mr. Montroy has already had to get stakeholders' input. We will make our community aware of the code of conduct by putting it on our website. We'll make it available to anybody that requests it in writing. But really, it just cuts down on what was actually required in our code of conduct. And again, our code of conduct's on the website, you see the different parts to it. But it's, it's much of a needed update. The second one is thirty-four-eleven, which is the unlawful possession of a weapon upon school grounds. And the other one, seventy-three-sixty, which it refers to, are both in there. The old policy actually contained verbiage where rifles, as long as they were used for hunting and things like that, were allowed on school campus. No, no, no such weapon, no such firearm. These policies update to, you know, the plastic, spring-loaded, you know, weapons. Anything that is, you know, looks like a weapon can be construed as a weapon. So both policy thirty-four-eleven and seventy-three-sixty update those policies. So absolutely no weapons of any kind, unless the board approves it, are allowed on school campus. Policy seventy-three-sixty, and again, there's the current and the recommended, also includes a little stipulation in there about the suspension of students that brings weapons or firearms on school grounds to a minimum of a year's suspension. But again, you know, that could be, you know, it's, it's on a case-by-case basis. But it really updates both those policies that absolutely no firearms of any kind are on school grounds. And then policy seventy-three-ten, we are looking to remove that. Erie One Bosse's provides us our policy services, and because that first policy, thirty-four-ten, is being updated, there is no need to have the seventy-three-ten, because it's just reiterates some language in there. So there's no need to have policy seventy-three-ten. So this is your first reading. You have two more readings of these, but we just wanted to update those because the code of conduct later on the board agenda is up for board approval.
So I'm looking through these. Did we all three read this? The second one on the weapons, seventy-three-sixty? It, it spoke about not just school grounds, right? Did I find that, but, but all school-related events?
Correct, yes.
Stuff like that, so.
Unbusters, yes. Anything that's school-based.
The trap shooting league.
That's what I was wondering, too.
Do you need to give some sort of express written consent that we're allowing Hopefield Stewart to show up for an event like that?
That would actually fall under the other school's policy. For example, if Elba's, if Elba's doing that, it would be on their policy because it's on their school grounds. I can talk with, you know, Gretchen over there. Obviously, that, that would be an exception, but.
If in the future you were to decide you were okay, you would recommend to the board to allow an employee of the district to be armed, would that need to be public knowledge, or would that be an executive decision, you're making a recommendation along?
I'd have to work with our SRO on what the laws are. You know, we haven't had that request, but if that comes along, I'd have to contact our attorneys, find out the, you know, insurance and legal ramifications of doing that, absolutely.
And then, John, at the seventy-three-sixty again, if you kinda go down to the middle of the page, where in the old line it defined what a weapon was, I believe, or a firearm was. It says to refer to eighteen U.S., whatever there that is he is. I'm wondering, if we have the language in our code of conduct, what the weapon is already. So Mr. Montroy has it defined here. Would it be possible to include that definition in this policy as well? So it's kind of a one-stop shop, we wouldn't have to reference anything else, but weapon and firearm would be defined there?
Yeah, let me double-check what is in our code of conduct, 'cause I think the one that's in the policy is probably more on exhaustive lists.
Not really, it's the same, it's, it's verbatim.
Same one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll research that and put it on there, sure.
Just so that we have, like, you know, I, I hate to have somebody try to figure out what all of those numbers mean.
So this policy would refer to a student who physically brought the firearm. Is there any language that could support the threat of bringing a firearm?
Well, threats, when someone actually doesn't, and it's just a threat, isn't, isn't like a criminal type of charge? That would just be on a case-by-case basis, depending on how that is perceived by the school and what is said and the platform it's on and all of that. So this is, these policies are for all, all people, parents, you know, teachers, students. Threats, it doesn't involve here in threats, but obviously, we do take those, you know, seriously, but that's not a case-by-case basis.
And that to sound like a definition hound here, but for thirty-four-eleven, it says instruments. Kind of middle of the way down, John, maybe five lines down, instruments referred to in section twenty, or two sixty-five point zero-one. I'd like to know what those are. I don't know if this is a list here of them with the spring. I just would like it to be clear, so there's no, like, gray, if we have that list.
No problem.
And then my last thing was code of conduct here. So we have a code of conduct that we're going to approve tonight, somewhere in my stack of stuff. Yeah, right, right here. And I think this is the, this is the new one, right, Jason? This is the twenty-two, twenty-three one. So how do we know what's new on here? So like, it's great that you have a committee and that you're going through it, but I would imagine, like, the dress code. Sounds like Mr. Peterson's language here for the dress code for age. Yep, I'm getting used to your, your writing here, sir. Very good, well-written. But like, I'm sure this is new, right?
Those were some that evolved or that simplified a lot, I'm sure.
Right, right. So like, I would love to be able to see what was, what was there before and what's additional to what is now. So if there's, like, I don't know, I, I, maybe not a lot of Hopefield people wanna read this cover-to-cover and already have a good working understanding of it. Maybe they just wanna see what's new, and then they can go to the website and say, well, this is a section that's new. I should make myself aware of it and then, you know, live the rest of the day. So I don't know if that makes any sense, that we can see what, what's additional or what's not additional.
Do you have that?
I mean, I have to go back into the Google form?
It can be right.
I can write it to you.
Okay.
Thanks. Also, I have a policy that's gonna be on our website. Will there be a link? 'Cause it's listing code of conduct there, you know, throughout. If they were to click on that, then they can go right to the code of conduct.
It's already up on the website.
Is it?
Yes.
Is it linked on the website?
Yep, yep. It's under the district links tab.
Okay.
Yep. It's actually a working document, so any changes that we make to it are automatically made in the, in the code of conduct.
Anything else on those? I'd like to, you know, to, to the max meeting, if that's right.
Yeah, I'll make those changes, I'll list those specific items for you.
Thanks, John, thanks, Jason, I could put you either on this slide, but thank you.
Could, just like, reading through it again, it's very gotten focused. I mean, there's some other mentions, small mentions about the weapons, I'm just trying to think, like, how can you bring that up?
I think, once he gets the definition from that, two sixty-five, where you get all the knives.
I mean, you're talking, you're talking now fireworks, knives. What is it now? Is it a two-inch blade, three-inch blade? I think it's two and a half.
There's these, like, starter pistols, like, there's all sorts, it's, it's a long list of them.
You know, but if you throw in, you know, someone wants to joke around with a cap gun, that falls under this policy, 'cause it looks like them, you know.
Like, even thirty-four-eleven, I mean, it's, it doesn't even say till the end of reasonable, flexible we- weapon. You know, everything else is done, focused on gun, and then it, it kinda, just like that last word, mentions other weapons.
I'll give it an exhaustive.
Yeah, once you, well, it's in that two sixty-five.
Two sixty-five.
New York State will list all that.
Yep.
That's what that is.
Reports. All right, Christine, what do you got for us tonight?
Not a lot is new since our last meeting a couple weeks ago. The auditors were here at the end of last week, so doing their work, so anxiously waiting feedback. I have some things I still owe them, which is usual when we have an official release, but. And I don't have anything new on ARPA, the federal stimulus money, things aren't just kind of a status quo. We've submitted everything up to date, and nothing, nothing really new to report.
See, ARPA's and daily news, that the state has moved forward to solid project there, so.
Right.
Probably you'll be hearing from G C B C.
We did today. Yep, we did today, just very great, just to kinda give us a heads-up that, hey, by the way, this is in paper. And there is an update, and they have not had any conversations as far as what the pilot will look like at this point in time. So Mark, I see you said you will include us in any conversations that come forth from this.
And the one solar farm, remind me the name of it, that was out in Helvian.
Oh, it wasn't solar, the wind one.
Heritage.
It was Heritage Wind.
Heritage Wind is no longer in our.
Oh, really?
In our one, yeah.
The one.
Yeah.
Moved it a little bit, far from the north.
Yeah, we are notified, yeah, yeah. They rezoned it or did something, and you're not a part of it anymore.
We only get that ten dollars a year, whatever it was.
All right, John?
Just a couple of updates to the board. Our entire admin team will be attending the G B Leadership Institute Conference in Ellicottville next Tuesday through Thursday, so we will all be on the office, that includes Christine, so. I don't really wanna be in charge.
Hell, thanks.
No, we can reach myself. And with the new teachers listed later on in the agenda for board approval, I believe we have filled our vacancies in new positions. We are sitting in pretty good shape, and it's, and it's only July, so hopefully, we've, you know, we've covered all our bases. I will tell you that everybody that we are hiring are complete rock stars, whether they have experience or not. Put them through a very, very, you know, extensive interview process with committees, of board members and parents and teachers, and just thrilled with everybody that we got on board here in O A. And the capital project work is continuing. Our next walkthrough will be in August, because I will assume over the next month, things will start to take shape. It may look like to the community that things are dragging, but it's a lot of behind-the-scenes, a lot of wiring, a lot of plumbing, and can't put in the final fixtures until all that stuff is done. So I will assume by August, at our August meeting, that you'll really see some changes occurring over the next month or so. And I don't know, if you have anything else to add?
Now, we had our first round of summer school session one happen, because we just had a blast. We really tried to elevate these to camp-style, bringing in the S E L, music, math movement, and just kinda presenting material in a different way for our kids, and they've really responded well. So we're excited for the next session to start in August.
Um, we've been busy getting ready for six-one-one, so we've hired the teacher, behavior specialist, to be appointed tonight. Class is full, we actually have a couple kids on a waitlist that if someone else backs out, we can pull someone from the app list to bring them in. Matt and J C have been going to T C I training, and they'll go in a couple weeks, so we'll have that up and running for the school year as well. And then working on streamlining some processing procedures to make things a little more clear-cut and know what direction we're going for certain avenues in the special ed department.
Talk a little bit about that T C I training. It's intense, it's all week, and so there's a long days. But what we're learning through this therapeutic crisis intervention is that our philosophies are meshing with what research says we should be doing with some of our students that need that kind of therapeutic intervention. So it's been kind of a seamless learning process, again, really intense, but, but it kinda reaffirms some stuff that we're doing that I think is some good stuff. Student-first, getting to know the kid, building relationships, and appropriate responses.
My server thinks it's seven.
How many days was that for, man?
Oh, it's every day this week.
Every day this week. Lynn, how many kids are in these sessions, so like, the first session and?
We had forty elementary students, and I think Matt had twenty to twenty-five.
Right.
Six, seventy-three.
Just shy of twenty-five. And about the same for the next session as well?
Yep.
Any questions?
So we had the six-one-one class, did we fill that all with the district kids, or there are some kids from?
We have students from, a student from Pavilion, two from Lockport, one from Wyoming, and Akron. So, and then one other waitlist are Akron and another Lockport student as well.
Great job, thank you. On to new business. Be it resolved that items eight-point-two through eight-point-ten be approved by Senate General, can I have your motion? Any second? Any discussion?
Eight-point-three, contract with integrated therapy services. Have they mentioned a replacement for P T? O T, excuse me, not P T, O T.
Yes, it is someone, her name's McKenna, she's coming from Iroquois, she was contracted with Iroquois, so she will be coming next year. She'll be here five days a week, same person every day.
So how many P Ts and O Ts do we have for the elementary school right now, three K through, one of each?
And their contract was all lived to twelve grade.
Right? So do you feel like we have enough support in the elementary school with just one of each? Or most, I just, I know that the needs are starting to increase more and more, so I'm wondering.
Michelle did request that the adday for O T. We had Ellen was here for four days typically, and then we tried last year with Stacy, she was here two half-days, and that seemed to really work, so we requested one person for all five days, so that consistency.
Beautiful.
Yeah. And we're still able to offer some early interventions going into the Fun Fridays, I'm sure you are very familiar with us, and some of those handwriting with kinder orders. So she's not completely full, but we're not able to still, still offer some of those early interventions as well.
Great. Thank you.
I apologize to the board, the contract, eight-point-four, for the Janus Steel Languages, that just came in today. I've been working with her and our attorney on that, that is desperately needed, as we have some families that we need to have some translation services and then some documents, you know, rewritten for us. That just came in this morning, and I did not wanna wait till the August meeting, just 'cause school's starting. So we've used her in the past, we just made it a two-year agreement. And like I said, our attorneys looked it over, and we got it back to her, and she just finalized it and sent it to me this morning. So we wanted to get that on board agenda, that's what eight-point-four is.
No problem, 'cause that's been tough for us these couple years, I think. For eight-point-seven, the proposed updates to the mentoring plan. I, I love the mentoring plan here, I think it's really well-written and executed really well. I think I, I, I will still vote yes to approve it, but I, I am cautious about one of the items where it says to delete the language of mentor responsibilities, that requires mentors to attend mentees' post-observations. I, I really do think it's important that mentors are at post-observations as well. But that's, we approved it, I think we approved it in its entirety. I don't think we can change that at this point. So I just, I just say that there for anybody that's listening. And then it's just, it's a great plan, and I appreciate everybody that is involved in the mentoring process. It's a really good list of people that are attached to new hires here, I think we have quite a few, if we look at the list. And then there is one other thing, Christine, I'm gonna put you on the spot, and I'm sorry to do this, but item eight-point-one-zero, the modification of tax collection. Could you speak to that just a little bit, please?
Oh, yes, they just wanted a one-year agreement, just to see how it went the first year, in case the pricing wasn't accurate for the second year. You know, they just wanted to make sure that they were, they were clear on that. They're fully committed to doing it, we're not gonna transition the historical data, given that it's a one-year thing. We're gonna wait for another, until this is done, we're new next spring, and then maybe then we can do a multiple year, three, and then a four. But the legislature just had a question about, why don't we just see how it goes for the first year, so.
And this is way more involved than I originally thought. Christine has done a lot of legwork, she would have sent it in.
They do.
And I didn't realize, I don't know if you realize, all the.
Yeah, yeah, we said that, I'm like, oh, yeah, there's, there's a couple of communications that are not there.
It's going back until our April, almost, so it's a lot of, a lot of work, and I think it's a good plan.
I think so, too. And I, I, I think, and their, 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 their office is fully onboard, and they're really excited about the opportunity of maybe doing this for other districts as well, they just wanna see it.
But again, it was like something that we're piloting almost, right?
Almost, correct. But other neighboring districts are doing it in Orleans County and across the state. I've asked amongst a larger group and that use, that outsourced it, so to speak, outsourced it to another municipality in their council committees, and they do, they, they speak very highly of it.
I just appreciate the effort, it's good, I think it's a big lift, but it could be a good force in the long run.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion?
I have a question on eight-eight, the budget transfers, so one to two.
Yep.
So we're transferring money out of the ground repairs for the fields?
No, into, into the ground repairs, to do the field, yes. For the, for the baseball field repairs. We wanted to get that in, in the first order. No. No, 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 those are all going in. I usually do just the topic.
Jordan said they should be here in the next week.
He said by the end of the month, which is.
Yep, next week, we do next week, yes.
So I'm, you know, I hope, I, I said it today, I said, this month or next month? Because this month is this week, so I hear this week. So, yeah, within the next week, that's it, so.
Yeah, thanks for moving so quickly on that, too.
I have a question on eight-point-nine.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I made an apology, it was a dress size, I think I was like here, and they changed order for the trees, was that it? They need to do with the difference of color.
Which ones, is that the thirty-four?
That, that's the one that's up here for the, for the new middle high school entranceway, is that what you're talking about?
Right, we, they approved it last month, but we didn't have a physical copy of the change order, that's why it's on here this month.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with the elementary terrazzo, no.
No.
As a quick update, we believe that it was the sealer that was put on the new terrazzo and has a little bit of a bluish hue to it. So what we're doing right now is we're working with the company to try to remove that sealer. So we're taking patches and trying to see if we can eliminate that, and then we can go over the whole floor with, with a sealer to, to match it. So we've been working with them on that. So we'll, I'll keep you in the loop once the decision's made and once the plan is in place, but that's, yeah.
All in favor?
I have opposed.
Motion passes. Let's see here, Carl, I don't think we have any communications tonight. So, and tonight we have two things to discuss in roundtable. John, the first one's our SRO contract, it's a tricky thing to follow, Philip.
So, I would, I am making a recommendation to the board, if, if there is support from the board, in executing a contract to have our SRO here for twelve months. I sat down a few weeks ago with Brian Friday and Bill Sharon, and not only is Jordan just a valuable part of our admin team, but the concern that comes in, and I'll just lay it out for you. Jordan works a twelve-month position, and I have him working on a daily basis from seven o'clock in the morning till four o'clock in the afternoon. The reason I do that is, obviously, he's here for arrival, and he's here at the end when the elementary kids are dismissed. By working seven to four, he is actually working nine hours a day. So working that extra hour gives him one and a half hours of comp time. If you multiply that by five days a week, you're talking seven and a half hours of comp time every week that he's, he's accumulated. And that's, and he wouldn't even be here for any events, he's just working his normal days. And then if two or three times a week, he's here for a Friday night basketball game or something during the week, that just adds on to his comp time. Obviously, when we have holidays and vacations throughout the, the school year, you know, we kind of prepay on, you know, on a ten-month basis. So if he's not here, he loses eight hours of his comp time, because obviously, we don't have him work when he's not here. The problem is, it doesn't add up. And he has so many extra hours of comp time at the end of the school year. The other issue, too, is that he's awarded extra vacation time and sick time and leave time, like all of us are.
Through his own contract.
Through his own contract. And since we have him ten out of the twelve months, really, five, six of his contract, we should be affording him these vacation times, what he has in his own contract. We don't wanna do that. We want him here when school is in session. So what's happening is that he's ending the school year not using really any vacation days, any sick days through his own contract. And the time that he has off, he's using the comp time he builds up, but he still has so much more comp time at, at the end. And obviously, over the summer, he can't turn around to the sheriff's office and says, hey, you know, I, I'm gonna be off this summer because I gotta use this time, this time, this time, and this time. So we sat down, and I, I called over to a neighboring district who does have a twelve-month SRO, and financially, they found themselves either, one, paying for overtime, or two, which didn't add up, or two, having a twelve-month SRO. So when the summer comes, that comp time that he has accumulated, along with his contract through the. along with his contract through the sheriff's office of his sick time, his personal time, his vacation time, can be used during the summer. It wouldn't be for the whole summer. You know, he could work half-days. I mean, we still have summer school going on here and summer camps and whatever. So I don't I don't want to be without an SRO during the summer. But what had happened this year is Jordan worked so many hours that he lost weeks of vacation time and personal time and comp time because, you know, the sheriff's office was like, you can't use all this time. We still need you to work for us. So when sitting down with Chief Friday and and Bill Sharon, I I'd like, I have a contract for a twelve-month. It would be an extra twenty thousand dollars because we're up to about a hundred thousand dollars for ten months. So I believe the contract's at one seventeen, but he would be ours. And really, instead of paying for services, we can utilize him and utilize him however we want throughout the school year. He can gain all this comp time, use it over our breaks. And then when the summer comes, whatever is allotted to him from his his own contract can be used over the summer. I mean, he's going to SRO training in in a couple of weeks. You know, that's three to four days. There are things that he's doing for us over the summer just because he is in that position. But to make it, I guess, seamless, he would become our responsibility with all of his time because, like I said, you know, every day he's working an extra hour, gaining an hour and a half. And if I worked him five days a week without him even attending here, there's a day that he could take off. He could take off the following Monday and say, I'm not coming in because I have seven and a half hours of comp time, which we don't want to happen. We want him to use it during during our our vacations and whatever. And there's just not enough of that time. When he's not here for a week, it's forty hours. But he gains seven and a half hours of comp time every week and that's just working his regular hours. So.
Every five weeks he works, he gets a full week off.
Correct. And that's not even if he's at events. That's just working his normal rate.
Right.
So I want him here at events. So he's really gaining time. Correct. Yes.
I thought I I'm just trying to remember when the when the sheriff came and talked about this program that that was part of like they wanted to build comp time so that in the summer they could, they would use that. I is what I thought originally had planned and now it sounds like it's not happening through their department or for Jordan.
That was that was if that was if we wanted. Well, if you recall, the first year that we had an SRO, we didn't, we weren't using, he wasn't gaining comp time. He was working an eight-hour shift and maybe gaining a couple of hours here and there when he was at events. But he ended up owing us time, if that makes any sense.
We were seven to three originally or eight to four?
Yeah, we would flex hours so that he was only, you know, ready hours.
Correct. I guess we should have denied him at some point. There's definitely a lot of accounting there and there'll still be a lot of accounting even on the twelve-month contract, right?
Right. And we do. We track his weekly hours. He signs off on it and I sign off on it. He's got to give a log to the sheriff's office of his hours.
I guess I would, I think I from the very beginning was was in favor of having a twelve-month employee. I just didn't, you know, the way it's sort of being sold that he's losing time. Now, I don't know union's gonna allow their employee to lose time. Like, he's not forced to give that up.
He's on here. He did.
So it's a use it or lose it at the end of the fiscal year?
On his.
I mean, your vaca, I know our vacation is used in losing, you don't carry, at least our contract, you can only carry over so much. But I I think their comp time is significantly higher than what we can pull up. And like I said, I I think twelve months is is.
And it's not that he's gonna be off all summer long, I don't think. But, you know, like I said, he could work half-days where he's here in the morning and we have summer school and.
And then his comp time would supplement the other half? Is that what that means?
Correct. Yes.
That makes sense.
Is there anything we could put, I don't want to say that he has to use it outside of our schedule, but you know, I hate for us to find out that, you know, always wants to go on vacation a week before winter break, so he's not here that week. You know, what I'm saying?
So really what happens with the contract is we pay Monday through Friday for forty weeks, whether we have holidays or not, at eight hours a day. We prepay for the ten months. So that's where his comp time comes in because on a day that we have a holiday, like for Labor Day, that's gonna be, you know, September fourth, he loses eight hours. He owes us eight hours.
Right, no, I get that. What I'm trying to say is.
Right.
I don't want to say that we have to prevent him from taking not taking a day off that we're in session, but I want him to be using his time.
Right. But I and you're right. I think with this new contract, if he knew he was twelve months and not having to have to answer to the sheriff's office of can I take this vacation time over the summer and then saying no, he can take it when, you know, we're not in school and he does have that time over the summer because they do make him work over the summer, you know, obviously.
But there's nothing to run against him saying I'm taking the first week of summer off?
No, but I think he knows in his role that, you know, I mean, if he just calls up one day and says, I don't feel well, I'm not gonna make him come in, but.
I don't think there'd be anything preventing him to have done that this year.
Correct.
I mean, he has however many weeks of vacation he's built up. I mean, he wanted one vacation.
Correct.
Eight on vacation.
Sounds like he could have taken the last two months off if he really wanted to.
I did end the school year early with him. He did not work till June thirty.
Gotcha. Yeah. I mean, so I think there wouldn't be anything to prevent it. I'm already him doing that if he wanted to.
Is there supposed to be coverage from the sheriff's office if he's gone?
Well, and and that's a whole nother thing. We want, we want Jordan. You know, if it's a day here, a day there, they have trouble providing coverage, you know? I mean, if he if he decided for a whole week, yeah, you know, do you have coverage for us? Probably not, because I know they're short. But the reason I had that meeting with them is we want Jordan. We want him twelve months. Will you give him up to us? I think he does. I think he does a great job here in the community and he's and they said yes. That was really partial of my meeting to provide the option. I've had requests from some community members to have two SROs, one in each building. Given that our campus is here on one campus, I don't see that being a a high priority at this point. I think just having a twelve-month SRO here where we can react as a team very quickly. It's not like the elementary is down the road or the high school is on a different campus. But I just, I wanted to throw that out to the board. Financially, we can, we can support it. And we just don't want to lose him and I think it gives us a lot of flexibility with his schedule. And, you know, even when we get more so towards the end of August, you know, trainings and things like that that we normally wouldn't get because he starts, you know, September first, he'd be here with us, you know, all summer long. He is co-chairing the, you know, the safety committee and I think he's just, he's so valuable to have here.
Does this maybe help him to get more training through that he can maybe run in the summer and stuff that, you know?
Yeah, he's going to SRO training this summer, you know, and it's.
So when you talk about like his training, what do you think the original expectation was? You know, so entering this contract with the sheriff's office, was it that they would provide a trained SRO, meaning his training would occur on the sheriff's time and we're selling you this package deal? Or is that?
It depends on when it is. It depends on when it is. There's an SRO school over the summer that he's going to. It's not on our dime. It's on. So but there are times where there's trainings during the school year that sometimes, and I kind of fight with J C with this, you know, maybe J C goes and and not Jordan is. We want him here on campus. I don't want to send him away for a week during the school year because we need him here.
So the sheriff's office pays for the cost of those trainings? Do we need to pay for the cost of the trainings? Is that he wants to go on?
No. And most of the trainings are free. You know, we do send him to, you know, the U B safe schools, things like that.
So so will they have no responsibility then to train him anymore? Like, it'll be our responsibility. It'll be on our time. It'll be at our cost. So they're providing him as a person, but it's up to us to enrich him.
Yes, yes.
And that was always the.
That was always the case. We've sent him on many many trainings as he had mentioned, you know, in his presentations. That's always been on us.
And that included, that was included in our time.
The only thing they trained him on is on a, she was rightful, you know, firing range.
Sure. So so essentially they're providing him as 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 their employee to us as a service, but.
And now we we would get him now as a as a person, not a not a service.
So this pay differential would bump him from ten months to twelve months, but it would also encompass all of the trainings that Matt was just mentioning anyway? Those are all part and whole?
But in fact, we would, we would take over his his contract, what he's afforded through his contract and then build up, you know, the comp time throughout the school year. So when we have breaks, he would end up using that comp time, yes.
Jordan himself isn't getting a twenty thousand dollar raise. It's just being paid.
Correct.
My loss.
Correct, yeah.
But he should also be available for like P Ds, additional P Ds as well during the summer months leading up to the start of the school year? He could be the person to come in and do that for us?
I think we ask a lot out of him too and it's nice to have him at the sporting events and after hour does that, you know, the comp time went to. Will it come and play? But it makes sense to play frame and lose time because he's been here for some events that we want him to.
Right.
I assume he's in favor of those too? Have you really spoken to him at all?
What's that?
Have you talked to him?
Yes.
I think, you know, one of the things that you look at the Texas shooting, you know, that was one of their faults is their SRO wasn't there that day. That was one of my kind of concerns with, you know, when I go through here in the morning and that one's back here, you know, and that's, I think this is one of those things that offered us more, more of that coverage. A lot of things that went wrong down there, but that was one of the SRO.
So what's our timeline for this initiative, John? It's the summer.
ASAP. I have both contracts. Just because what I what I would end up probably doing with the sheriff's office if if the board is in favor of twelve-month, starting that on September thirtieth and then just run it through October, or sorry, September first and run that through August thirty-first. Because the contract for the ten-month, basically, I mean, they gave me the twelve-month starting July one, but that's just on their end. I wouldn't want to start in July because he hasn't worked a day yet and he isn't supposed to until September first, so I would run it starting September first. But I just, I want to make sure that they're prepared because they would probably have to end up hiring, you know, another officer and just to let Jordan know so he can plan out his school year for the very fact that, hey, Jordan, you're really gonna be working on a school schedule. We don't want you taking a vacation day or, you know, vacation time in the summer. You're gonna have all this time over the summer and during our school year. Because that was his big issue of when do I take my time that's in my contract? And I I honestly wouldn't let him, like, five, six of the time, ten out of the twelve months, he's with us, so.
Time to take.
Yeah.
This person, so if we go on this, then I then.
I'm sure too.
So I'll make a motion to change the SRO contract from ten months to twelve months. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Second. You had a discussion. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed. Motion passes for the twelve-month contract.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, John. Thanks for keeping that.
The next thing, I just kind of wanted to give the board some information. I've been talking with Matt and J C and Connie and throwing COVID aside and and all of that. And obviously, the last couple of years with region's exams, it's been kind of cloudy. I really think that we need to make more of a concrete statement, more so for our middle school students and families in regards to our promotion and retention. And I don't want to call it a policy. I guess I want to call it a procedure. The elementary is very different because they are on, you know, rubrics. The high school, you know, is pretty clear-cut with REEDs, exams, and passing courses. But at the middle school, number one, sixth graders coming in, that's the first time those kids get to see numeric grades. And then at that level, you know, there isn't, you know, you have the state assessments. You don't have REEDs exams. And so what do we consider, you know, passing and failing? Obviously, you know, the sixty-five is the passing, but every year, there's some kids that are in question. And I think the kids and the families and even the teachers don't really know where where there's a line. So I talked with Matt and we wanted to put together a procedure for this school year where as sixth grade is still considered elementary, what I was used to in my in my own district, in my own building, was that, you know, the sixth graders or the fifth and sixth graders, I was in a five through eight building, that we would allow them to fail one core course and we would promote them. So I'm just talking about the sixth graders now. Excuse me, since they were elementary, two core courses and we would promote them. If they failed three, they'd have to go to summer school for one of those. In seventh and eighth grade, they could only fail one core course. If they failed two, they'd have to go to summer school for one. And if they failed three, they had to go to summer school for two. I think something. Sorry.
Can you repeat that last one, I guess?
Yes. So as a sixth grader, being new into the elementary, the middle school and still being considered elementary grades, with their core courses, we would allow them to fail two and promote them. If they failed three or failed four, they'd have to go to summer school for one or two, namely, you know, the E L A or M A. In seventh and eighth grade, since they're secondary, they could only fail one core course. If they failed two or three, they'd have to go to summer school for one or two of those. And I think outlining that and getting into hopefully what is a normal school year and with the success that the middle high school saw with the M T S S program and the supports that are in place, I don't think this would affect a lot of students, but it would certainly give us another way to monitor kids and to support them and be able to talk to families and parents instead of getting towards the last two weeks of school and saying, hey, you failed two courses. Well, what does that mean? I I don't know. We don't really have anything down as a concrete procedure. I think it's, I think it's the time to do it. I think the region's exams are gonna be back. All the state assessments are gonna be back. And if anything, it just kind of holds the kids' feet to the fire that this is, this is what it is. And again, with the processes of the M T S S program in place, you know, every two to three to five weeks, we're watching these kids. This won't be a surprise at the end if 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 a kid isn't, you know, promoted or has to be retained, so.
So this would be communicated to families quarterly or during?
This would be communicated to families ASAP. I just wanted to get the board's blessing on this. I don't want to make it a policy, but more so of just a a middle school procedure moving forward with our middle school, you know, minus COVID, that this is, this is kind of the procedure that we're gonna move forward with.
But as the kids are making the grade, how would.
Yes, well, they're part of the M T S S, the tier one, tier two, tier three. You know, the families know they're trapped.
This just puts out the written expectation for the end of the year middle school, so.
Correct. It's just grade six through eight. Correct. Yep.
So someone not succeeding in the M T S program, they know what's coming.
They they know what's coming.
So I think we're talking that, like, how do we, how does a parent know this? And you mentioned before, like, if your parents, where this will go out?
We will create a separate document that says, you know, middle school, you know, promotion, retention. And again, I don't want to call it a policy, but middle school promotion, retention, and just kind of, these are the expectations and this is, this is what it's, this is what it's gonna be.
But it wouldn't fall under code conduct. It wouldn't be in a handbook.
It could be in. It could be in the handbook.
It probably should go in handbook.
Yeah, it could go in the handbook. But because this is new, this would have to sit as a separate document that middle school parents coming in know exactly what the what it is. And again, that could go throughout the parent's world.
Recently, and he was right, there is no clarity on this. And and I thought, well, if nothing else, we should put something down to offer clarity. What does it mean to fail a class? Two classes, three classes? I don't think this will change. In in years past, students who failed middle school were sent to summer school. I'm really pleased this year that they have the option to do our in-house summer school because it gives them remediation all four core classes. So what we would do is just recruit more heavily as needed for those kids that attend our summer school, provided that we continue it. Even if if we didn't have the numbers, we could still send them to a particular regional summer school. I don't see a a large influx of of students failing course. summer school, um, I don't see a, a large influx of, of students failing courses because of new procedures in place. But anything, the kid fails a course, uh, you know, there's a lot, there's a discussion about retention and promotion, it's never black and white, um, this offers some clarity so parents have some guidance.
And the parents are involved as soon as sort of recognized that.
Through parent teacher conferences, they'd be, we're doing our jobs, parent, partnering with parents, they're every step of the way, this is communicated, they know where their kids stand.
Sign off on some of the shows so they can come to us at the end, but I didn't know anything about this.
Well, I'm even thinking like on a report card, or like there's an attachment to a report card, that this is, this is kind of what is the procedure.
It'll be, it'll be very well known where there's not any surprises.
Yeah, I guess that would be my concern, right?
And what I hear a lot too.
Yeah, well, wait a second.
I know that.
Reminds you that we've, we've built into that students' process. Layers of communication I thought were very effective, our teachers are making calls, uh, every time we produce a new list and reminding parents, our counselors are making calls anytime they're up to year two, I'm making calls anytime they're coming in on Saturdays, so there's layers of communication that do exist.
Multiple different forms of it versus just the parent square, the phone calls going out, okay, that, that's my concern.
Regarding grades, which is all this is.
And a lot of the times.
You hear more so the last couple of years, well, we don't fail, we just push them through. I don't really want that to be the case, there should be a, a concrete standard out there, um, and, and I think, uh, you know, this is a good place to start, I think it's a perfect time to start moving into this next year.
Yeah.
Um, like I said, especially at that middle level.
Yeah, I, I like it as long as there's stops along the way, made me think about refrigerator magnets.
My thoughts on magnets?
Yes, yeah, so just, just like publicize this so people know that, uh, this is a consequence and that, I'd like the word concrete, it's nice to have, for a teacher to have something in your back pocket, that's absolute, doesn't happen too often.
If for whatever reason we weren't able to host summer school here, would transportation be provided to those students to go?
We do provide transportation now, we have sent, and it goes by, in the memo that I've crafted and I haven't shared with staff yet, that's going to happen soon, um, there's a lot of misconceptions, one teacher said to me, uh, two years ago, we sent, I think there was twelve kids, and they said, oh, we send our middle school kids to summer school, they didn't know, and that's on me, like, there should be clarities on what happens when our kids fail, so this just puts it on paper, but we do provide transportation.
And in-house as well?
And then for in-house, uh, as well.
I don't think it's something that's all that.
No, I just want to give, I don't know, we just, we didn't want to throw something out there and have the board turn around and say, you know nothing about it?
No, no, this is good.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
And, uh, first and all, uh, be it resolved, uh, that items eleven point two through eleven point four be approved by a consistent agenda, can I get a motion? Get a second? Any discussion?
I s- is there, I mean, I see it's an L employee, but is there fall, football cheerleading? Not yet.
We don't have the numbers.
All right, I just thought they were, they're.
Not this time, no. If something were to change, we'll let you know.
Even for our extracurricular, I see there's a lot of step ones, so we got a lot of new people coming in, are there, are these the only people or are there, are you, are there multiple people for each of these things and then you just pick the best ones, how's that work?
Are you talking about like the class advisors?
Any of it, um, yeah, class advisor, I think there's a, a bunch of step ones, there was, uh, the music director, literacy team, varsity club, I mean, there's a lot of new people and some tools.
So what we do is we send out a Google form, actually, Carlos sends it out, um, that lists all of these positions and then teachers reply, um, and you, you get that information and.
I can give you the correct amounts, what they're getting paid if you'd like.
No, I'm not worried about what they're getting paid.
Oh, okay.
They'll, they'll, they'll.
For these, for these positions, I mean, is there, are the people fighting over them or are they, you know, what, if only one name goes in and then?
Couple here and there, but.
Okay.
Building principals then review it and, um, give Carlos the recommendations.
Gotcha, okay.
So it's by appointment then, these, not by seniority, is that what you're asking for the job or?
Yeah, you know, it.
If someone, if someone's been doing the job and has been doing it well, then they can continue to do it, but sometimes, I mean, it's, it's a whole bunch of things, sometimes teachers will say, I, I don't want to do it anymore or, you, you know.
Yeah, there's kind of a unwritten feeling in the buildings at times that if somebody's been doing that for a while, unless they say they're not interested, a lot of people don't want to apply against them, I guess is how I would put it, so a lot of the times there's only one applicant that comes in or there's a discussion that happens and they'll say, oh, I talked to so and so, maybe we are going to split this, or they're feeling a little burned out or some family situations have changed, I know, um, with the literacy position, you had some pregnancies and things and new moms, it's hard, so they're kind of stepping away from some of their roles right now, so they're kind of spreading out the wealth, um.
And that's sort of what I was wanting, sort of that unwritten rule, like, you know, because someone may all of a sudden, right, have some things open up that, hey, you know, I might be really good at this and now I have the time, well, someone's been in there for five years and, you know, that person may be really, really good at it, but sits on the sideline because of that unwritten.
Right.
But I didn't know if that was how that worked, like, is it a, it's not a set stone written rule, so if you really wanted it, still throw your hat in the ring and then nobody treats you differently?
And then Matt and Connie and I sit down and talk and, um, there's sometimes where we have conversations with teachers and kind of do some interview kind of style where what are your thoughts on your programming and goals and kind of narrow down, um, the best choice for that role. And some of the positions don't increase, isn't it always step one no matter?
And very well.
What?
I don't remember which ones that.
There are a few that are in there, um, so sometimes you'll see step one just because that's the nature of the way the contract is written.
Gotcha.
I was wondering, there's a few in there that I, I know that have been there for a while, but there's still one, so that makes sense.
Thank you, I answered my question.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Eleven point five, uh, memorandum of agreement for a behavior specialist be it resolved, the board of education approves the attached memorandum of agreement. Make a motion?
So moved.
Get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, motion passes. Eleven point six, permanent placement for school monitor be it resolved, the board of education approv- approves, excuse me, approves Kirk Fisher to be appointed to the permanent placement of school monitor in the elementary school cafeteria effective July twenty fourth point twenty-two, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Thank you, Kirk, for working in that environment, uh, it's a tough spot to be, but I know, uh.
Disagree.
He does, he does a nice job.
Makes it look really neat.
Yes, I think my, yeah, my son, Joey's son, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion passes, uh, permanent placement for secretary.
Justin, you missed eleven point five.
Did I really? Oh, I got eleven point five, memorandum of agreement.
Yeah, you did.
Yep, eleven point six.
I, uh, I.
Eleven six, the school, okay, got it, no, he got it, okay.
I, I apologize.
Well, this is your moment to shine.
Yeah, I'm trying to bring everything.
Oh, you're not holding him out.
Carla, uh, please get the, the lights, uh. This is cue of music, uh. Be it resolved, the board of education approves Carla Cole to be appointed to the permanent placement of secretary to the superintendent, uh, district clerk effective July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, uh, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
I think we can take that there and say, no, thank you for the light, you're on eleven point eight.
All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, motion passes, thank you, Carla, you're the greatest.
Thanks.
Uh, and eleven point eight, appointment of long-term substitute reading specialist be it resolved, the board of education approved the appointment of Erin Wendling to the long-term substitute position of reading specialist effective September first, twenty twenty-two and ending November twenty-second, uh, twenty twenty-two, uh, all in favor? Oh, sorry, I got excited there, uh, Carla's got, uh, I blame it on you, Carla, uh, so Matt made a motion, uh, can I get a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
She's not here this evening, but she was Candace George's, um, long, well, student teacher and the kids loved her and she's just kind of become part of the family, so she's excited about this opportunity.
Yeah, congratulations, my Lauren is very happy, she can't say her last name, say her life. Yeah, tell me, yes, wow, right, um, so, so, uh, next up here, uh, eleven point nine, appointment for U P K teacher be it resolved, the board of education approved the appointment of Tiffany, like, Amarin.
Amarin.
You got it.
Am- Amarin, okay, I'll get it, uh, it's a three-year probationary position of U P K teacher effective September first, twenty twenty-two and ending September first, twenty twenty-five, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Congratulations.
She's here with her, to the O A family again, she is alumni, so she's returning to her roots, very excited.
Thank you, welcome back.
Thank you.
All right. Eleven, uh, point ten, appointment of middle high school special education teacher be it resolved, the board of education approved the appointment of John Williams to a four-year probationary position of special education teacher effective September first, twenty twenty-two and ending September first, two thousand twenty-six, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Any discussion?
I also had that John wanted to be here, he's coaching.
He's, he's definitely not, I can tell he's not here.
You can't miss one of the first days of, of week three. You know, a great football coach for Gavin too.
He is a big guy, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes, congratulations, Jen. Eleven point eleven, appointment behavior specialist, uh, be it resolved, the board of education approved the appointment of Sarah, I'm going to give it a shot, Montalban?
Perfect.
Yes, all, since Thursday I've been working on it. And different ideas, uh, to a four-year probationary position of behavior specialist effective September first, twenty twenty-two and ending September first, twenty twenty-six, can I get a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, let's get past the discussion part, congratulations, uh.
Very excited to have her, she comes from Erie Moseys as a behavior specialist and very, very knowledgeable what she does, so she's going to be a great addition.
Yeah, yeah, can't wait, see what you're going to do here, thank you for being here. Let's see here, eleven, twelve, elementary six one one, elementary teacher be it resolved, the board of education approved the appointment of Morgan Allender, uh, to a four-year probationary position of elementary six one one, special education teacher effective September first, twenty twenty-two and ending September first, twenty twenty-six, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Congratulations, we're very excited to have her here to join us in this adventure, but it'll be fun, we're very excited, she comes from very, very good experience with, um, preschool with disabilities as well as, um, interdisciplinary to charter schools, congratulations.
It's exciting.
Welcome.
This is great, thank you for being here, um, let's see here, fly zoom. Oh, wow.
Yeah.
That's impressive, I can barely figure that out, man.
Player tired, this man, it was awful.
It sounds like you've recovered.
I have.
Well, good.
I have, took a while, but I'm here in one piece. My joy.
All right, eleven point one, three, tenure appointment, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, Mr. John Fiskus be it resolved that Lynn Gaylord be granted tenure in the position of elementary building principal effective August sixth, twenty twenty-two, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.